Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order our Londonderry Town Council meeting. Today is Monday, April 1st, 2024. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remain standing, please. I want a moment of silence for all of our first responders. If it wasn't for the heroes that serve our community every day, some of us in this very room might not be here to do this, including myself. So, please, let's remember them. Thank you. Please be seated. All right. So, public comment. The town manager has asked me to say a couple of words. Mr. Town Manager, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recently became aware of a social media post disseminated by the professional firefighters of Londonderry Local 3160 on March 30, 2024, which has attracted considerable attention concerning a response to Mallard Lane on March 30, 2024, and reading as follows: "Working fire transmitted on the orders of Dairy Ladder 3. Due to a budget freeze enacted by the town manager, we are operating in drop-down mode, meaning our response was significantly diminished as only Engine 1 and the battalion chief were available. Since I became town manager, support for our public safety departments has been my first priority, and this includes the Londonderry Fire Department. LFD is not operating in drop-down mode. LFD is currently budgeted for 12-member battalions with minimum staffing at 11. Battalion 3 was staffed at 11 on March 30, 2024. While over the past year, LFD has consistently hired overtime to hold staffing at 12 if a battalion member is on leave, vacation, or calls out sick. This has not been the historic practice before 2023, and the current budget approved by the voters does not support this, given the number of vacancies LFD had early in the fiscal year. In fact, staffing has sometimes been allowed to drop below 11 in the past. This particular call was dispatched at 11:58 a.m. When the working fire assignment was transmitted at 12:03 p.m., companies were committed to a motor vehicle accident and a medical call. A 3160 member commented, 'Shout-out to Dairy Fire for coming to Londonderry and extinguishing our fire due to our town's budget freeze and drop-down staffing.' Again, in my view, there is no drop-down staffing, and LFD's response was not significantly diminished. On the contrary, two companies' responses were faster than if responding companies had been in quarters. An LFD Engine 1 arrived on scene at 12:05 p.m., two minutes after the first dairy company arrived. The medical call cleared simultaneously with the Mallard Lane call being dispatched, allowing Engine 2 to proceed to the scene faster than if they had been in quarters. The fire was knocked down quickly. It is not surprising that Dairy's response to this particular fire scene was faster than Londonderry's because Dairy Station 3 is 1.1 miles away from this scene, whereas the closest Londonderry station is five miles away. Mutual aid, as you know, Mr. Chairman, is always called for a building fire in Londonderry, and this is the norm in the fire service. Last week, Londonderry both provided and received multiple instances of mutual aid, underscoring the importance of these partnerships. My staff and I became aware that LFD's overtime expenses were trending significantly over budget, and in January, we learned the cost-control measures adopted by LFD earlier in the fiscal year had not been effective to reverse this trend. At this time, LFD's $723,000 overtime budget was almost fully expended just over halfway through the fiscal year, and LFD was running a projected deficit of approximately $487,000. Because of the significant time remaining in the fiscal year, and in order to ensure sufficient funding for all of our departments, including police and DPW, with the town council's awareness, I instituted a budget freeze across all town departments. This is important because it is illegal to overspend the town's total-approved budget by even $1. Ensuring there is enough money to fund all of our obligations, all of our services and programs on the last day of the fiscal year is one of my most important obligations. Weekly LFD overtime that was averaging $20,000 to $30,000 per week has come down to less than $10,000. The freeze is working, and it has brought LFD's projected deficit down to around $226,000. During this freeze, we have continued to approve purchases for vehicle and equipment maintenance and other needed purchases. In March, I gave approval for LFD to fill a staffing vacancy during this freeze, and we have staffed all battalions at 11 or 12. When I communicated the freeze to the LFD administration, they requested the ability to take an engine company and an ambulance out of service when staffing levels are at 11, out of concern for the well-being and morale of the workforce, and to avoid two-person engine companies. I supported this request, making it clear that operational decisions about firefighting are within the fire department's sole purview. The two budgets I have proposed to the town council since I became town manager include significant increases for LFD, including doubling the training budget, which had not been increased since 2017, adding $66,000 for vehicle maintenance, $18,000 for station maintenance, $12,000 for the safety program, and $126,000 for overtime. In my first two years in office, I have proposed, and the town council has approved, $525,000 in budgetary increases for LFD, an increase of 6.5%. When this year's Article 15 proposing $495,000 to hire additional firefighters is included, the budgetary increases the town council and I have supported rises to $1,019,798,000, or 12.7%. I am also proud that over the past two years, the town council and I have supported other significant LFD requests, including $710,000 in contract increases, which were ratified by the voters in 2022, $495,000 in funding, that's the first year's expense for additional firefighters to staff each battalion at 13, which the voters approved in March, $120,000 in funding to equip each riding position with an infrared camera, $146,000 in funding to purchase four mechanical lifts to move patients in and out of ambulances, $44,000 in funding to purchase an additional command car in order to ensure there is a backup when one is out of service, the addition of a second deputy fire chief, the creation of an assistant fire chief position, $2255,000 in funding to purchase two new fire trucks, funding firefighters to obtain paramedic schooling and credentials, $173,000 in funding to equip each vehicle with a minimum loadout of gear and equipment, and $275,000 in funding for the fire equipment and vehicle purchase capital reserve accounts. Additionally, my staff and I have worked closely with the fire chief to fill vacancies. In the two years I have served as town manager, we have hired 17 firefighters. It took four years and 10 months to hire the 17 firefighters before that, meaning that we have more than doubled the pace of hiring since I took office. While LFD has been plagued by unfilled positions for years, the town council and I have supported filling each vacancy, and we have retained these new employees. Our support for LFD does not end with funding. The town council, my staff, and I have been proud to attend fire academy graduations, pinning and promotion ceremonies, retirements, and other important events that recognize the exceptional men and women of the Londonderry Fire Department. The town council and I will remain committed to supporting our fire chief, command staff, and the members of 3160. We will continue to do so as careful stewards of the taxpayers' money that has been entrusted to our care, and we will balance LFD's needs against the needs of our other vital first responders, the police department and DPW department, whose work is equally important. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Well said. Is anyone for a public comment? Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Perfect. Good evening. My name is Timothy Serrato of One Burr Bank Road in Londonderry. I'm here to speak about traffic safety concerns on Route 102. Approximately three months ago, a group of neighbors and myself attended our first traffic safety committee about, to speak to the escalating dangers of 102 as the town continues to develop and traffic increases. Tragically, the day following that meeting, there was a fatal accident on 102. Since then, the town has been in communication with us, and we've spoken about the submission of a traffic safety audit with the state. And about an hour ago here, in these same chambers, Senator Sharon Carson sat in the room explaining to us some of the paths forward, one of which was the creation of a plan by the town in order to submit to the state for the 10-year strategic plan. So, the main purpose for me being here this evening is to vocalize this to you all and ask if there's anything that you can do to help us, whether it be the form of a special committee, some type of spin-off meeting. In my opinion, three months in between traffic safety meetings doesn't give us the ability as residents to interface and participate in this process as much as I, and maybe speaking for my neighbors, would like to. I know that there's a lot of work and that there have been a lot of people moving to try to get this done, but, in my opinion, given the level of severity of the incidents that we've observed and the escalating traffic that we've seen in town, I'd just like to vocalize my willingness to help in any way I can and ask you all to help in any way that you can, get some movement here and help protect our kids, our neighbors, our families.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Name an address, please.
Raymond Blethton, 18 Rosina Road, Londonderry, New Hampshire. But, two things. One, I just wanted to fill in one thing that Tim and I were talking is, during that meeting, it was, what's the plan? It was asked numerous times by the senator, what's the plan for these intersections? I think that is something that's done different ways, but there's, but I think what's important is that the town does have a plan. So, what is the plan? What does the town want those intersections to look like? So, I think that's something that we need to move forward with, and hopefully, that's what that committee could help work on. Secondly, I just would like to make sure the town council is in full support of the traffic safety committee. So, I think it's important that you guys support them and help them in whatever needs they have to address these concerns.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
My name is Dan Bragg. I live on Trolley Car Lane, 5 Trolley Car Lane, and I'm first here to say that we appreciate the town and the people who are working on the noise barrier wall along 93. It's coming along great. We're very happy, as I'm happy, and I'm sure others are, well. But we have some concerns, and no one really knows how we get this addressed. And one is, we need to have the road, Trolley Car Lane, repaved. And I haven't found a process or a person to speak to to say, are we on the list? When are we on the list? When can we expect to have the road repaved? We do appreciate the town sending out trucks to patch the road, but the patches don't last very long. And so, that's a concern of ours. So, if you could point me in the direction, or somebody can tell me who I need to talk to, I can do that. One other item is, a trolley car lane intersects hubby. On one side, as you're going down, on the right side, there is a traffic guard, and there's a small depression. On the other side, on the left side, is the Oliveri's house, a steep backyard, a steep fall-off, and no guardrail, and a damaged chain-link fence, probably because somebody didn't stay in the lane and messed the fence up. So, I feel that it was a safety situation with a drop-off, and not wanting to land in the, accidentally land in the side of the Oliveri's house, I think you might look into providing some kind of guardrail, at least at the corner. People are not driving as best as they should. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. We appreciate the work that's being done. Contractor's been working in ferocious weather and getting it done, and it's good. So, we're looking forward to having a little quieter time on Trolley Car Lane. Except if the paving trucks show up, we'll be happy to hear that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Name an address, sir.
Daniel Bouchard, 8 O'Connell Drive. I'm not a big social media person, and the other day, my wife said to me, she goes, "Oh, my goodness, look at this thing on the fire department." And I want to thank Mike for, you know, clarifying some of this stuff. Like, I did post on social media, and I said, you know, "This is not the place. If you have concerns, you come to the council meeting." I don't see a lot of people here that came out from social media, but I guess my, what I want to, people don't understand, sometimes we voted four firefighters in, it's not effective till July 1st. You know, Justin has a responsibility to keep an eye on the budget and to see how the spending goes, and sometimes, you know, freezes have to go into effect, and I understand that. I just want to make sure that when we put a freeze on, we're not putting the people in this community at jeopardy, we're not putting our employees at jeopardy. The last thing I think we want is later on, looking down the road and saying, "We have a loss of life because we did this." There's a lot of places you can cut, there's a lot of places, you know, I mean, we have positions that haven't been filled yet, and, you know, I know that's a tax savings, but when I look at it, and I know you can't spend a dollar over the budget, you know, and I understand that, but I would rather have less money at the end of the year, instead of saying, "Oh, look, we turned in $800,000 and have the service for our community." So, you know, that's why I wanted to speak on this tonight, and I'm glad that Mike did, you know, make some clarifications on that. And as I'm sitting there, you know, yeah, we've done a lot for the fire department and all that, and, geez, my phone. One thing that you have to keep in mind also is that our fire chief, our fire chief hasn't been at the helm for a whole year, so he kind of inherited this. So, whatever was done beforehand, you know, as far as spending, and now he has to look at it and go, "Okay, I have to rein it in a little bit." So, I appreciate that, and I just want to make sure that our employees are safe, because I look at the police department, I'm sure that, you know, we wouldn't send one officer to a domestic disturbance. We'd make sure we'd have at least two. So, just keep our employees safe, keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bouchard. You had raised an interesting point. You had mentioned a fire chief, and who just beckoned if you'd like to come forward, talk, Mr. Butler, Chief Butler?
Yeah, so, Fire Chief Bo Butler. There needs to be ownership taken. I'm not one to dodge it, but I also need to explain how we've gotten here, because it's going to go a long way for the community, and Officer Dan, I appreciate your sentiments. This is not the town manager's fault, this is not the assistant town manager's fault, this is not the police chief's fault. It is not any of your fault or the finance director's fault. This is me, being the fire chief, taking a hard-line stand, as I stood here on September 11th, 2023, to say that I will put the well-being of the firefighters first, because once the members are protected and taken care of, everything else, the macro's going to take care of itself, once we take care of the micro, which is making sure my firefighters are safe, safe. I prioritize civil protection and public safety over everything else, and I don't regret that in the least bit. This is an important community. My job as the fire chief is to identify and look at where we're going and say, "This is where we need to go," because it's in the best interest of the community. Now, there's a disconnect. The town manager and I spoke this afternoon. I disagree with what his sentiments are regarding dropdown, and that's okay. It's okay to have a disagreement. Where we drop the ball is when we become disagreeable, and the town manager and I had a very good conversation this afternoon about why the number 12, 1-2, is the Londonderry Fire Department's staffing level. So, I've been doing this for two decades. I want to walk everybody down a trail with me, so that we can establish, finally, that 12 is the number for the Londonderry Fire Department to operate at. So, from establishing 10 firefighters to 11 firefighters on shift, this occurred in March 2015, and it occurred through a citizens petition article led by Tammy Seickman. The voters approved it. It was roughly $265,000. It was bringing our shift staffing at the time from 10 to 11. Not my words, the taxpayers' words, 10 to 11. I have an article from the Dairy News that outlines just that, 10 to 11 across all four fire battalions, okay? So, now that we've established where the jump from 10 to 11 happened, I want to now establish where 11 to 12 happened. This occurred in 2018 and 2019. The MOF for the Mechanism of Funding for this was through the SAFER grant. On September 7th, the SAFER grant was awarded by FEMA in the amount of $7,000, $705,66. On September 10th, that same year, a couple of days later, there was a council meeting. Chief O'Brien announced to the town council that the fire department was awarded this grant under public comment. Doug Smith, the finance director at the time, said, "This is unanticipated revenue. We have to have an additional meeting to accept these funds." Part, that's, that's accurate, that's a true thing. On October 15th, the next council meeting, the unanticipated funds through the SAFER grant are presented during public comment by Doug Smith. The grant covers three years and four additional firefighters for the town of Londonderry. Resolution 2018 hyphen dash 11 is approved by the town council, 5-0. As far as I'm concerned, and the way government works, the council is the voice of the people. When the council approved SAFER for another four firefighters, that was my citizenry telling the council, "We want this. We want our shifts brought to 12." Now, Senator Jeanne Shaheen was very impactful and direct in securing these funds. She wrote a letter on behalf of the fire department to FEMA, Senator Jeanne Shaheen, longstanding senator for the United States. And because of her involvement, we were awarded, in part, the SAFER grant. On September 7th, she visited headquarters on the day the grant was awarded and announced, and congratulated the Londonderry Fire Department for doing so. On September 10th, her office releases an official press release explaining what the SAFER grant would do for the town of Londonderry, and I quote, "I have it right here from her office, a sitting U.S. senator. With the additional funds, the department will be able to hire four new full-time firefighters. The new firefighters will mean the department will have continuous 12-man shifts." Continuous, in my estimation, means all the time. Continuous. That was the deal. As fire chief, that is my minimum staffing level. So, I assume office on September the 11th, and I'm down, I've already identified a challenge, I'm down six positions. Through working with Local 160, to continue to give the taxpayer the service delivery that they deserve and have come to expect it, we held over on overtime to make sure we were meeting that minimum number of 12 every single shift. If you're down six positions, that's going to come with a cost in doing that. With being down six positions, we actively worked to fill the roster as fast as we could, and we were able to do that. When the roster gets full, overtime comes to a halt, and now we're able to maintain 12 without mandating employees, and it's a lot better for the community. The union leader and the Londonderry Times on September 8th and the 13th echoed the same statements that Senator Shaheen's office put out in that official memo, continuous 12-man shifts. So now, in my opinion, we've established where we went from 11 to 12, excuse me. And 12 to 13 is very simple to establish. The taxpayers on March 12th voted overwhelmingly at almost 70%, a vote of confidence for the fire department, through their vote, to give us an extra four firefighters, to bring staffing level up to 13 per shift, to raise and appropriate $495,000. So, as the fire chief, I hold the line, and I say, "We're going to continue to give this community the services they have demanded and come to expect." Period, end of story. Not my words, the community's words, guys. The community's desire to make sure that they're prioritizing civil protection and public safety first, because they know the importance of it. The town manager does his job. The finance director does his job, and sees that I'm trending way over because I'm trying to hold the line at 12 with six open positions. So, the reins get squeezed, my doing, and I want to make that clear. This is my doing, but I have a reason to stand for it. When the reins got pulled, I made the decision to the firefighters, because remember, I stood here and said, "I'm putting my people first," because when I do, they're safer, they can affect the mission better for the people sitting behind me in my 12 o'clock. So, we get together as a command staff, we call it emergency meeting, on the Monday following the announcement of the budget freeze. I pull in my entire command staff, every single chief officer, myself, and the leadership of 3160, to say, "Guys, this is where we're at. The sauce is already in the spaghetti, I can't pull it out. It is what it is. But now, we have to make a decision, because gone are the days for this fire chief, where we're going to put two firefighters on a fire engine, which isn't even a recognized standard for good reason. It's unsafe." And as you know, when you're running companies with not the same amount of staffing as you had prior to, they're doing more with less, injuries are going up, short-term disability is increasing, overtime is also, there's cause and effect to everything. So, as a team, we looked at it with my boss's support, to say, "We are going to drop down, because of dropdown, going from 12 to 11, we're going to take out a fire engine company at Central Station and an ambulance at Central Station." Because I cannot have my members, who are already so stretched thin, trying to maintain 12 with six open positions, now doing an increased workload with less. Supported. All around the board, supported. So, I just want to make it clear that there's a reason why we're in the predicament we're in. It's on me. It's not on anyone else associated with the town. It's on me, because I elect as the fire chief to put this community first. That's a non-negotiable thing with me. If you want someone else to not do that, then I'm not the right guy for the job. This community means everything to me, so they're going to get everything that they ask for, 12 firefighters per shift, and we'll work out, and we're going to continue, through working with the town manager, finance director, the support of the council, to continue to get to that magic number for the Londonderry Fire Department of 15. It doesn't happen overnight, it takes time to get there. We're going to get there. But I just want to be clear, this is not his fault, her fault, or his fault. This is Bo Butler's fault, and I own it. But more importantly than owning the problem is, I had owned the solution, and that solution was to fill the roster of six positions. I am one away, I have the candidate, I am one away from filling the Londonderry Fire Department's roster to maintain 12 across the board. When everyone says it's impossible to hire firefighters, we got them lined up because they want to come work for the Londonderry Fire Department. We are right there, we're almost right there. And if the squeeze didn't come, Londonderry Fire Department's roster would be full before July 1st with 12 firefighters across the four fire battalions. Meaning, come July 1, when those monies are appropriated to add, to get to the 13, we're ready to roll. We're not kicking the can down the road, we addressed it. So, I hope that I have at least painted the picture, that this is not their fault, this is me. And I own it, I own the solution, and I'm prioritizing public safety through my members and the people that they serve, first and foremost, non-negotiable.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Fire chief, oh, when was the expiration of the SAFER grant? What was the expiration date of that money? You said four years, is that correct?
The, so, the way the SAFER grant worked at the time is that the grant covered the first three years. Yes, sir. The first three years.
So, that was 2018?
Yep, 2018, 2019.
2018, 2019, and one more year, 2020?
Well, no, the grant, the grant was awarded in 2018.
Okay.
And then the monies start coming in thereafter.
Okay. So, I guess perhaps my question would be, then, for our finance director and our town manager, is were we not budgeting in the budget thereafter for those positions? Do you guys have a history on that?
I'll let Justin jump in, but what I, Mr. Chair, if I may, but what I can tell you is that, yes, we're budgeting appropriately. What the budget cannot support is back, holding to 12 with six open positions, and that, to the fire chief's point, is why we ran up a close And that, to the fire chief's point, is why we ran up a close to half a million dollar deficit in the first six months of the year. So the budget is appropriate, provided that staffing is where it needs to be.
Okay, that provides a more clearer picture. So certainly it's not any cuts on anyone's parts and we were actually funding appropriately after the federal money had ended, so.
Yeah.
We are moving forward correctly and we're trying to make the fixes to do so.
Yes, everything's good when the roster's full. When the six open positions is zero, everything works as designed.
Great.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else?
Hello, Erin Matlin, library director.
Hi, Erin.
Across the parking lot. I just wanted to do a shout out and thank Betsy McKinney and Carol Introne, they're Board of Library Trustees. Betsy had served on the board for seventeen years and eleven years as chair and Carol has served twelve years on the Board of Trustees and I just want to thank them for their support of the library and the community.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, real quick, can we direct the town manager and his staff to get ahold of the gentleman on Trolley Car Lane for whatever kind of repairs may be done or if the state is providing any assistance for Trolley Car so that they can have a private conversation on that themselves?
So the town manager, taking notes during the conversation, I have no doubt that that will be addressed.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and I will point out that we've got a similar complaint some period of time ago. John Trotter and I went down and looked at the road the next day. It is, there is a plan to pave it, there was a concern about construction access and letting that project, even though, you know, there's not significant construction access into the ninety-three corridor, there is some. And so, and it's also very wet down there.
Yeah.
And that's the problem with the current pave job that you see. But yes, I made notes and it will notify the appropriate people.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. New business, order two zero two four dash zero five, an expenditure from the Maintenance Trust Fund. Director of Public Works, Dave Wally. Sir, good evening.
Dave Wally, Director of Public Works in Municipal Facilities. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Coming for you tonight, and Erin is here too from the library, if we want to go into any of the histories, she's really good at coming up with a lot of the things that are going wrong with the system over there. But basically, the fire panel is, was installed in nineteen ninety-seven when the library expanded, that puts it at about twenty-seven years old. It is sending what we call ghost alarms and some finicky stuff that parts are becoming increasingly difficult to locate and replace in a timely manner. And so we solicited three quotes to three vendors that we've worked with in the past and the low price is for seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and three cents. I provided the three quotes to you gentlemen in your packets, you should have them. And we are seeking that allocation to be expended out of the Maintenance Trust Fund.
All right, so this is for the fire notification panel?
Correct.
At the library?
Yeah.
Speaking of the library, from my understanding, we'll get to you, Mr. Wally, in a moment.
Sure.
You have a new friend over at the library?
We do, yeah. We have a new tortoise, his name is Oscar. And he has a library card already, so he's been very active in reading. But we researched it and we noticed the police dog does not have a library card. Yeah, so I was just curious if the chief would like to get him one and certainly we'd entertain that for him.
Do you have an application?
We do actually have an application. And keep in mind, our tortoise does not have the hairstyle that you. But yes, we do have it, so thank you, Chair, for me.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
It's Oscar.
Oscar a slow reader or?
Actually, he's quite active, he takes walks around the library and he's very fast, so.
Any discussion on order two oh two four dash zero five?
Mr. Wally, you had said that this unit was put in ninety-seven, but I'm seeing here that there were also several repairs made in the two-year-old panel? Can you clarify that part?
Over the two-year panel?
Yeah, I see here is, whereas several repairs have been made throughout the two-year-old panel, or is that an error on this?
Should say twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Mine says twenty-seven, does it?
Okay, what I'm reading on the computer says two.
Or say two. We can get that fixed.
Sorry, it's typo. My print says twenty-seven, but, okay.
Okay, I guess the order needs to be changed to twenty-seven. Wonderful.
Oh, in the order, it says.
In the order.
I didn't type the order.
No point.
Wonderful. We'll take care of that.
Okay.
Anyone else? With that, I'll accept the motion to approve order two oh two four dash zero five, expenditure from the Maintenance Trust Fund.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes in affirmative. Motion passes, order passes. Any old business?
Thank you.
Town manager, do we have any old business?
Not for me, Mr. Chair.
Think of approval of minutes, so I'll accept the motion to accept March eighteenth.
So moved.
Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative. Appointments and reappointments. Mr. Town Manager?
None this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Liaison reports.
Yes, I have some liaison. I went to the Conservation Commission meeting and they are in need of volunteers and they have one open position. If you are interested in volunteering, they could use people that would want to help with trail maintenance, with putting up trail markers, helping with spring cleanup, helping repair or fix things like bridges along the way, any trail repairs. If you're interested in applying for one of the positions, it is recommended that you go to a meeting, attend the meeting, see if you're interested and you are actually interested in doing it. And if you are interested, talk to Cameron and fill out a talent bank form and we'd much appreciate it. Anyone that is interested, has a trade, they want to help out, please contact the Conservation Commission and they will welcome your help.
Thank you, Counselor Dunn.
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the Heritage Commission meeting last week as I was out sick.
For the school board, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Slater and Sarah Loughlin on their successful election for chair and vice chair. Majority of the meeting was spent on just a numerous school board policies being updated. They had their first reading last week. And just really, this upcoming meeting, they're presented, they're going to, the school board's going to be presented with a final review of the district's special education program audit, which was done by Public Consulting Group and expected to dive into not only the special education program itself, but special education and general education and how they can work together with the district moving forward. Town manager report?
None this evening, Mr. Chair.
Assistant Town Manager report?
None this evening, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. So we heard a lot tonight about collaboration and support. And as I mentioned in my opening during our moment of silence, there are some people that are most definitely people that are here because of our first responders. And again, my heart and appreciation goes out to our DPW, our fire, our police for the professionalism. I also want to thank the town manager for the collaborative efforts that you take every day with your partners and your leaders in the community to make sure that our public has the utmost safety, their utmost safety is in mind. We go through tough times, we all do, and sometimes we have to make tough decisions and budget freezes is not a new thing, it has been done in the past, it happened during COVID. And I appreciate the continued collaboration that you and your staff and you three men, leaders of the community from our first responders, that you take in the partnership with the town managers and the town council. So we continue to support you, we continue to support the community. And with that, our next meeting will be April twenty-second at seven PM. I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Before I make a motion, I just want to put out to the public that we have a messy storm coming up Wednesday, Thursday, and potentially into Friday. Weather reports are all over the place from rain to two feet. So be prepared, gas up your snow blowers and be safe driving, this could be quite slippery.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, thank you for your comments and for your leadership and that of the vice chair and the other counselors as well.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All right. And that is not an April Fool's joke. So with that, your snow comments. With that, I'll take a vote to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Chair votes in affirmative, we are adjourned.